Six thirty, are we good to go?
Are we good?
Yeah, the camera's rolling, yeah. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Courier. This is the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. And before we get going, a few things. If anybody doesn't have a copy of the agenda tonight, the agenda is on the table right there in the back. Feel free to pick one up. And let me just get started. Again, my name's Jack Courier. I live here in town, we all do. To my right is Ms. Estafia Boras, who, she's an alternate member, but she'll be voting on every case tonight. And going around the table, we have Mr. Robert Shaw and Mr. Steve Lionel, and they are also members of the zoning board, and they'll be voting tonight. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He's the city, he's the deputy planning manager in City Hall. And he is our helper, you might say. He will not be voting on tonight's cases, but he prepares them and gets them set up for us. So I'd like to go through a few things. First of all, are there any changes? I'd like to point something out. On the agenda in the back, the first case, actually what's proposed is the second case, which is Seven Gaffney Street. The applicant had a medical emergency earlier today. Is there anyone here for Seven Gaffney Street? Okay, I see three hands up. So, an email came in, and the applicant had to leave town and asked the board to have this heard at the next meeting, which is August 24th.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, I'm sorry. It's two weeks from today, Tuesday, August 28th. So, let me just turn to the board here and say, in the past, when an applicant hasn't been able to make it for a reason such as this, we have always approved that request to hear it at the next meeting. I would just like to throw it out to the board. Does anybody have a problem if we table this to the next meeting?
I don't.
Okay, so Mr. Shaw does not, Mr. Lionel does not. I'll just take a little vote. I'd like to make a motion to table case number two, which is Seven Gaffney Street, to August 28th. Is there a second to that motion? That's Mr. Lionel. And all in favor of that motion. And I'd also like to say to the audience, as I go through the rules tonight, Mr. Shaw is our acting clerk, because our clerk is not here tonight. So, for the three folks at Seven, on the case for Seven Gaffney Street, we're not going to hear that tonight. I did want to throw out to you that, I don't know if you have any questions or anything on the case. We're not going to discuss it tonight, but you could contact Mr. Falk if you had questions or wanted to learn more about it. I'm just saying, did you get a little bingo card in the mail or something? Because, you know, there's only so much on the bingo card, but if you have any questions, you could just call Mr. Falk tomorrow, or anytime, and, you know, get your questions answered, you know, as early as you'd like.
Whereas myself and my neighbor are not able to attend the 28th meeting, can we submit a card?
Yes, so what I'd like to say in the microphone is the parties of interest for Seven Gaffney Street, the folks say they can't be here on the 28th, and can they submit their information? The answer is yes. You could submit an email or a letter. I would suggest the earlier the better, because we get packages, the board gets packages. And even if you send an email at the last minute, we'll still get it at the last minute, but earlier is always better. So you could provide written information, because all information is welcome on the case.
But we cannot hear it tonight?
Definitely not, because we're not going to hear the case. That would be really a violation of our rules of order. The question, again, was could we give the, could the folks give the information now on Seven Gaffney Street? And I was responding to that question by saying, we can't hear anything on it because there's no public hearing tonight on it. Were there any other questions on Seven Gaffney Street? Okay, well, I apologize, you know, for the tabling of that, but that's what happened. And so you can stay if you want, or free to go, probably don't want to stay. All right. All right, thanks, folks. Have a good night. Moving along on the agenda, 21 Amory Street. Is there anyone here for 21 Amory Street? Well, that's good, because that was withdrawn, so nobody's come out for that. So, those are the only two changes on the agenda tonight. So let me just keep going through the rules. Let's see here. So what we're hearing tonight, we are hearing requests for variances, and we're also hearing requests for special exceptions. Those are two slightly different things. And I just want to speak to that. This is the Book of Nashua Zoning Codes. This is what all property owners, myself and everyone here included, lives by. And what this board is for, why we've been created by the state of New Hampshire, is because there's a lot of adjudication, there's a lot of questions about zoning, and therefore zoning boards of adjustment have been created to essentially grant relief, where relief is deemed reasonable, from this book. And there's two types of relief, again, a variance and a special exception. And there's five criteria for a variance, and I'll briefly tick through those. Number one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three, substantial justice is done. Four out of five is that the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. And number five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So that's the five criteria for a variance. We're also hearing requests for a special exception, and that's a slightly different criteria. It's a little lower bar to get over. Number one is that the special exception request must be listed in the table of uses. And I would say that those special exceptions before us tonight are listed in the table of uses. And what that means is, this book of code specifically outlines certain special exceptions, say like an in-law accessory unit. Number two is that the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. That's number two. Number three is that the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system. Number four, again, this is for a special exception, is that any special exception regulations are fulfilled. And the fifth is, the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. So again, that's the five criteria that this board needs to hear to grant a special exception. Now, per state law, three affirmative votes are needed to grant either a variance or a special exception. We have four folks here tonight. And a couple other points. The way we hear testimony, the applicant will speak first. The applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. That doesn't mean you have to use 15 minutes. Sometimes it's hard to squeeze it in that time, in that timeframe. Other times, the application, written application, I think speaks for itself. And after the applicant speaks, then any other interested parties that have a favorable testimony to the application have up to five minutes to speak. After all, favorable testimony is heard. Anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition has five minutes to speak their concerns or questions. And then after all, any or all opposition, if there is opposition, then the applicant has five minutes to address the opposition. And again, if there is opposition, then one and only one person who has spoken in opposition has a final, up to five minutes, to make their final case. What I just described is the public hearing component of our meeting of each case. The public hearing, again, public hearing, it's called that because we want to hear from you, the public. After the public hearing on the case is concluded, then the public meeting will start. And the public meeting is us for deliberating on the case and likely rendering a decision. One other point is that, per our bylaws, we ask that all testimony is directed to the board, not to each other, not to each other in the audience. I've seen it done both ways, and I think it's much better to have your questions brought to us, because if you don't understand it, we probably don't either, and we want to get the question answered. And a few other points. Whatever decision we render tonight, any party of standing has up to 30 days to contest the decision if you feel we get it wrong. And that is done by a rehearing request. And a rehearing request, if you're interested in doing that, you could just call Mr. Falk to get rather straightforward, I think, criteria, to write a rehearing request. And again, that window is 30 days. Equally as important is whatever decision we render tonight, there's really a 30-day window of appeal. So that means if a rehearing request comes in and we decide to hear it again, the decision is stayed. So whatever decision we make tonight really doesn't cement up for another 30 days. Now, if a rehearing request is submitted and the board decides not to hear it, the next step would be to take your matter to the Hillsborough County Superior Court. I guess one other point, if anybody has a cellphone, I would ask that you put it on the silent or vibrate mode. While we're in this room, I ask for silence. If you want to get up and speak, that's fine. Please do it out in the door, outside the door, rather. And another point is, this meeting is recorded, actually, three ways. It's recorded on camera. And I'd like to say right now, excuse me, I want to thank Frank, who's the man in the other room working the cameras and the microphones. So it'll be replayed on Nashville Public TV. I'm not sure what night, but you could check that out and see when it's going to be replayed. It's also recorded audio, and in a few weeks, it'll be up on the Nashua.gov website. And you could click to zoning board and stream the whole thing if you wish. The actual legal recording is the written transcripts, and the written transcripts are usually typed up within a week or so. So, this meeting is completely transparent, but the one downside of transparency is there's a price we have to pay. And that price is only one person can speak at a time. The person must speak into the microphone. And I'll ask that each person need, well, not I ask. Each person needs to identify themselves and their address. And if the spelling of your name isn't obvious to me, I'll ask you to spell it, because we need to get it right on the transcript. So with that, I think I've covered all of the rules. Let me ask, are there any questions from anyone in the audience before we get going? Again, for, I think a few folks walked in late. Seven Gaffney Street has been tabled to the next meeting, and 21 Amory Street has been withdrawn. See no questions, are we good? I think we'll get started, then. Let's start. Well, I'm going to make a motion on the matter of 51 Robin Hood Road to remove it from the table. Is there a second to the motion? It's Mr. Shaw. Show of hands in favor of that motion. Is unanimous. So, we're going to pick up 51 Robin Hood Road. And this was heard at the June 26 meeting, and it was tabled till now. And I'll just read into the record what the matter is. There's two requests before us tonight, a special exception to allow an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit. And there's also a variance request to allow a second new curb cut on Robin Hood Road. And actually, a third variance to exceed the maximum total driveway width. 20 feet is existing, 24 feet is allowed, and additional 18 feet is proposed. So again, I'll open this. If the applicant or applicants, singular or plural, would like to come to the microphone and again, walk us through your application. You might want to lift that microphone up. Yeah, just angle it up. Yep, there you go. And, all right. If you could give us your name and address just for the record?
It's Jason Redman, 51 Robin Hood Road.
Hi, welcome back.
Thank you. So we've updated the drawings like you guys asked us to. So as you can see from the drawing that we're going to be adding the dwelling unit to the right of the existing structure, keeping with the facade of the house. Everything's going to match accordingly. And then going forward, we did the inside of the drawings to see what you guys, as again, you guys asked for, the sizes of the downstairs, the living room, the kitchen, and then going upstairs, having the bathroom and the bedroom. And we're asking for the additional driveway space, because where the driveway now is on Nightingale, and would like it, because it's going to be elderly, our elderly, her parents, my in-laws, to be, to get the additional curb cut, so they can be closer to their entrance. Because if we move, put it on where the existing driveway is, they have a 95-foot walk from the driveway to the door to get in. So, that's the reason why we're asking for the additional curb cut, to have that. And if it's, the size of it's too large, and we can cut it down to one size, to a nine by 20, as instead of the 18, where it would be two cars, and only go with a single one, so at least they'd be able to have one car on that side, you know, and then maybe they'd have to cut down to be an only inner one vehicle, instead of them having two. It could be, but the addition, yeah, for the curb cut, that's the reason. And because she just, yeah, she just had hip replacement surgery, her mom, so. And then walking that long distance in the winter with the snow and everything would be concerning, so.
All right. Anything else, or?
Nope, unless you guys have anything for us, you know?
Well, let's, let's see. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw?
It's really mostly just to confirm and have kind of part of the record, because I think it's all actually shown in your drawings, but the intent still is to have this additional driveway pretty much kind of roughly centered on the new addition.
Correct.
And then the entrance to the accessory dwelling unit is going to be on the side of the house.
Correct.
With the walkway.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to, like I said, get that, make sure that was completely clear and on the record.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions?
I guess I just have one.
Yep.
One of the requirements is to have an interior door.
Yep, and that's on the stair, where the stairs are going down.
Okay.
That would be on the first floor. The drawing wasn't that good, but that's where the door. So we're going from the stairwell into the.
Yeah, got it. I was just wondering if, if your parents were exiting, you know, if there wasn't an additional driveway. What, when you said, I think it was 90 feet or 95?
95 feet.
That would, that would be from your existing driveway, like all the way around to the new door on the other side.
Correct.
What would it be to one of the existing doors in the house? Like, do you currently, do you currently come in, like the front door, back door?
No, we go through the garage.
Garage, yeah, okay.
The existing garage.
All right, just curious about that.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, you could have a seat. See what else.
Thank you.
So, is there anybody else here tonight with favorable testimony and support of 51 Robin Hood Road, the proposed in-law apartment and additional driveway? I don't see any hands. Is there anyone with questions, concerns, opposition to the proposal of 51 Robin Hood Road? Don't see anything. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Who would like to go first? Mr. Lionel?
Of course, the, one of the requirements that the applicant is, for an ADU, is that there is no second curb cut. And we've heard, in fact, just last meeting, we heard a request for a second curb cut and driveway for an ADU with really pretty much the same reasoning as we have this applicant. We denied that request. That it is, the second curb cut would be on a different road, because this is a corner lot. It's a little different. But I'm uneasy about it. As, if there is a second curb cut in a driveway, I would definitely be more in favor of a narrower driveway than another two-car-wide driveway on that side.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I guess, I think I'm at a similar spot as Mr. Lionel, but maybe not quite as strongly. But, yeah, I have some struggles with the fact that the, you know, a clear part of the intent of the ADU ordinance is not having the second curb cut. I think the thing that makes this, to me, a little bit more, I guess, something to consider is the corner lot. And, you know, we've oftentimes talked about some of the limitations that owners face by being on corner lots because of having the two sides treated as, you know, with front setbacks and all those kinds of things. So, there is then, seemingly, I think, there should be some further, maybe, consideration of relief for the same situation that we're talking about driveways that are on different roadways. So, I'd still like to kind of hear the rest of the discussion, because I'm not, I'm not really convinced, but I think that's the thing that, to me, that makes this a more reasonable application. And there is the, you know, the, I think if they were asking for another doorway on the front of the house, that would really be just kind of beyond, I think, too many things. But I think the door on the side of the house, you know, is reasonable, and that meets the kind of the spirit and intent of the ordinance, so. But again, I guess I'd like to get, you know, the rest of the thoughts and see where the discussion leads.
All right, would you like to?
I actually concur.
Oh, you want to turn that on again? There you go, you're on.
I actually concur with Mr. Shaw. I'd like to hear more regarding this as well. I understand why they're requesting it, to have elderly parents and with hip surgery and walking the distance. I just would like to hear what maybe you have to say on it as well.
Sure thing. Well, first, I, on the application, I appreciate the increased clarity with the drawings, because that gives me comfort and support for the special exception, the ADU request. I'm completely fine with that. You know, I see, and we have drawings for how it would, you know, is proposed to be constructed. So, that I'm, you know, fully in support of. In terms of the driveway, I'm, I struggle with the driveway, because, you know, there, we did approve a corner lot situation before the language was tightened up. But also, on that corner lot, it was heavily vegetated. And, you know, you had to go quite a distance. It was a large plot of land. There was topography involved in that. So I guess, in short, I'm struggling with the second driveway. I don't want to, I feel uninclined. I'm not trying to persuade anyone. I'm just putting my thoughts out on the table is that, I guess I'm, I don't find myself that a corner lot is, you know, something that should be waived from the requirement of a second driveway. I mean, it is less noticeable than a non-corner lot. I mean, I concur with that. If, I agree with that, it's less noticeable. But maybe it's the engineer in me where I, you know, we have the rules and the spirit and intent behind it. And I'm, I don't think I can find support for that, but that's just me, and I'm not trying to twist anyone's arm. I mean, that's where I'm at on it. I don't know if we want to go around the table a little more, other thoughts? Happy to hear it, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I mean, I do appreciate your point. I think it's true that if the ordinance had intended to make an exception for corner lots, I think it would have, would have stated that. So, I agree that I think it, and I wasn't trying to say just because it's a corner lot, it should be allowed. I guess I was trying to look at it from a less impactful standpoint. So, to me, that gives it at least some further weight in terms of it being less intrusive. And I think it's still less in conflict with the spirit and intent. But I think kind of because of the engineer in me also, I agree with you that it's, it didn't say, you know, there's no, there isn't some sort of, like, difference just because it is a corner lot, so. And I guess I'd like to go back, because I, you know, you made the point, this is kind of a general thing. Totally no issue with the ADU, and I'm fully supportive of that. And I think that's, there's no issue there. I think this all really, to me, does come down to the curb cut in the driveway. And the thing that I know, the problem is that I guess, I think there is the solution or the answer that can be dealt with by just using the existing driveway in the house. I think the problem is that then there is either a very long walk, outside walkway that has to be utilized, or the applicant has to do something that might be more disruptive as far as, like, the in-laws going through the house, which is perhaps not the real intent, maybe by either party, but that could be something that the, you know, applicant could consider, especially ultimately if we don't, you know, approve the driveway. So I see that as, there is some other, you know, ways that this might work out for them, but I see none of those probably as appealing. Certainly, I mean, if I were them, I would probably ask for the same thing, but. So I guess, I remain uncertain as to whether to support it. So I think it almost seems like we're all kind of there, and I don't know that there's a compelling enough reason ultimately to do this. And I think even, you know, we get into the things of,[1625.52] And I think even be, you know, we get into the things of, you know, the situ, the situation, it's hard not to really decouple from, you know, what we hear about the elderly parents and, and, you know, medical health type issues, but there is a reality that there, at some point, this can, you know, have different ownership and that might not any longer be the, the case. So, and the only other thing I, I guess, might note just for the applicant's benefit is that there is the, I'm not sure I'm going to say it right, but there's the, there's the whole basically disability-based variance that could possibly be looked at specific to their situation to maybe, you know, look at this driveway from that need with the, and that's something that really is situational and wouldn't stay and run with the land. It's only really would be approved for whatever time that situation would be in play. So, but we're not, obviously hearing that, I just kind of wanted to put that out there as much for the applicant's benefit as anything, especially since I'm not sure that we're going to be approving this, this driveway.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Lionel.
Yeah, just a couple of observations. The, the design of the ADU ordinance with the requirement that there be an interior door pretty much assumes that the occupant of the ADU would be accessing that through the main house and not from an exterior door. You know, yes, it's not on the front, it's on the side, but that's still, it's still not really what was intended there. The other thing that, and not that this is specifically relevant, but I noticed that in the drawing of the interior of the ADU, the bedrooms are upstairs and I, I find myself wondering how elderly people with hip replacements and all that would, would deal with that, but that's not really a concern of, of our board.
I guess I had one other thought myself and that is, you know, I wanted, thank you, Mr. Shaw, for bringing up the disability component because just to clarify, you know, a variance runs with the land, like, like you mentioned, and, and it's compelling to me, you know, from my heart, you might say, to, to grant a variance for an elderly person that, you know, probably has trouble walking, you know? I mean, it, you know, it's, it's the way it is for me, but, but the laws are such that it goes with the land and that was the reason for the creation of the disability safety valve, I guess I call it that. So just to kind of play up on that, if there is a, you know, medical disability, the applicant could apply for a second driveway under that reason, which for, I, I don't even know if it comes to this board or not, I, because we haven't had one in a long time.
It does. It's been a while.
It's been a while, but, you, you know, but that is granted for the, the length of the disability versus running with the land. So that option, you know, is, is always present. Just looking at Mr. Falk who's confirming that. Any other thoughts, Ms. Boras?
We covered them all. I am in favor of the ADU again and all of the concerns that we have are all validated. The disability base is a great option.
I guess, just to do a straw poll here on the driveway variance. Is there, can I see a straw poll of who is in support of that? Who's not in support of that? I think with that, I'll just make some motions. All right, I'm going to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Jason and Tanya Redman of 51 Robin Hood Road. I'm making a motion to approve the special exception for, to allow an attached accessory in-law dwelling unit. It is, the dwelling unit is listed in the table of uses. I don't have the number in front of me, it's not here, but.
15 table.
Oh, thank you, it is. Table 15 dash one, number three. The board finds that it will not create undue traffic ingestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, will not overload public water drainage sewer or other municipal systems. And the special regulations, I recall that we went over these special regulations with the applicant on record at the last meeting, but I'll just tick through them, that the accessory dwelling unit does not exceed 750 square feet. It's only accessory dwelling, it's the only accessory dwelling unit for the existing home there. There's no new entrance or exit on the front. By the plans here, it's on the side. I'm just going to fast forward a little and say I, I don't think we'll be approving the driveway, so there's no new curb cut from the street being constructed. And we have some nice plans in front of us that shows the accessory dwelling unit is compatible with the existing structure. The owner of the property will be occupying either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence. And the owner will be providing the city of Nashua, Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds. The, there's one additional parking space is required and that's supplied with the existing driveway. Per testimony, there's an interior door between the primary unit and the accessory dwelling unit. And the single-family dwelling and accessory unit shall not be separated in ownership. And finally, number nine is that the accessory dwelling units will only be associated with the single-family detached dwelling. So I, in this motion, again, the nine special regulations are fulfilled and the board also finds that it will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood. So with that, again, I make a motion to approve the special exception. Is there a second? I see Ms. Boras's hand is in the air for the second. Any discussion on the motion of approval for the special exception? Show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So moving on to the variances, I'll take both variances together, they're both associated. I'm making a motion to deny the variance to allow a second curb cut and deny the variance to exceed the 24 feet allowed for driveway space. I think the board finds a variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. I think the board finds that the second driveway is not within the spirit and intent of the ADU ordinance. I think the board makes no position on the effective property values of the surrounding parcels. I think the board finds that the second driveway would be contrary to the public interest in the spirit of the ADU ordinance and that substantial justice is, is essentially not, by not approving this. So I'm making a motion to deny the two variances for the driveway. I see Mr. Lionel's hand in the air for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? A show of hands in denial of the motion is unanimous. So folks, you've heard what we've gone through, one yes, two no, that's where it falls. If you have any questions with that, I'm sorry we couldn't grant everything, but the special exception is granted. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number one. We're moving right on to, I'm going to open the public hearing on case number, what's listed here is four. The owner is Susan Marie Travers. The address is 7 Summer Street. The request is a variance from land use code section 190-17V. It is to maintain two principal unit, two principal structures on one lot. Is there anybody here to present this case? Hi ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name and address, do you have information for us?
Yes, I have letters that my office letters have figured and supported.
Okay. All right, if you want to head over to the microphone, and I'm going to say that the applicant here has handed the board some letters of a butters that are in approval. So we'll tick through this as you present your case. Could you give us your name and address for the record?
Yes, Susan Marie Travers, 7 Summer Street.
Hi, welcome, Ms. Travers. Would you like us to, would you like to walk us through your application?
Sure. Do, do I just start from?
I, I prefer just a, you know, a summary overview. I mean, it looks like it's a pretty old lot and how we got here from many years ago today.
Yes, I, I bought the house in 2006 as a three family. I was left to raise my four children on my own and I knew having three units would help to cover my mortgage. And I've taught here in the Nashua District for 12 years, raised four of the children. I have one child who's going into his senior year, president of his class on the Board of Education, really great kids. I don't want to move them. I just can't afford to stay in the house and pay the mortgage with only two rentals. I bought the house legally as a three family. The title insurance, everything that went through, I lived in it as a three family for eight years. And then I was told that somewhere along the line, someone didn't pull permits, I think maybe 25, 30 years ago. I went to the assessor's office, it's been assessed as a three family for, for over 20 years. I have paperwork here that show that, but I do understand and respect, and have taught my children to respect the fact that the zoning laws are to help us to live in a community that, to keep it safe and, you know, comfortable, which is why I talk to all my neighbors. Where I live, every single neighbor, with the exception of one in back and in front of us, are all multifamily. My neighbor to the right that I have the letter from, Jeff and Emily, they have an in-law and they are also in support because it doesn't, it doesn't disturb the integrity of our neighborhood at all. They're all multifamilies, but, you know, they're well-kept. The carriage house is the extra unit that, that's a separate, I don't know what your wording is, it's a separate building.
Principal structure is the known word.
Principal structure, thank you. And it's, it's, I, I don't know how long it's been there, but I know since four owners previous, but it was built in, in the 1800s. And from what I understand, there was a fire and it was rebuilt, but it's been there as a rental for over 20 years. So, do you have any questions or, I'm not sure if I need to say?
Well, we'll see in a minute. I just want to add a few things on. I mean, my guess is that the carriage house was there when, because before automobiles and there were horse carriages, is my guess on that. A couple of things, you know, the, the criteria that this board looks for is, you know, special circumstances of the land. Economics are not a part of it, so certainly I have empathy for your need for income, but on the other hand, what you've ticked through are some things that are very situational to your specific plot of land. And I just wanted to summarize that. You're saying that that carriage house has been there for decades and decades and it's existed as a separate unit for decades. And there's also the situation that you bought it thinking that it was with knowledge, some written information that it was. And so that's all, you know, I, I think some sizable criteria that the board can take into consideration.
And where I live, I think I, I think I put it in with the paperwork, there's, across the street on the corner of Concord and Summer Street, there's a beautiful, like, white, they're all different houses that have connected, I think they convex them. And there's a separate unit that's real close, very similar to mine. And I believe it's just because, like, we live in the North End and that's just been so established for so many years that I appreciate the zoning rules, but I think a lot of that neighborhood, you know, don't, they weren't built when, when those zone, zoning laws were in effect. Does that make sense?
Pre-existing conditions.
Okay.
Conditions pre-dating zoning. Yes, I, I would concur, there's more, a lot of those in the North End. Mr. Lionel has a question for you.
Yeah, I, I was looking at the, the city, the zoning card, assessment card, and look, and the comments, of course, are very cryptic and I can see the, the change from three family to two. If I understand it correctly, the carriage house is listed as one, as one unit and the main structure is listed as one unit.
Not when I bought it, but when the city said.
When you bought it, the main structure was being, was set up as two, as two units. And so that's what, we're not being asked about that, we're asked about, Mr. Falk, can you explain?
It's an RC zone which does allow multifamily, so multifamily, the three units are allowed and she has enough land area for that. It was thought years ago that she did not have enough land area, but further records have indicated that the land area is fine. The only reason why she's here is for the two principal structures. We never really had any really solid evidence that the carriage house was used as a residence, you know, but it's the applicant's testimony that it's been used that way for, you know, even two, three, four owners before she has bought it. So there's a pretty strong history that the uses, you know, established as two principal structures. I guess the thought was just to legitimize it here with the board that there are the, the two principal structures, because you're only supposed to have one per lot and she does have the two. And like the applicant said, there are, there are dozens, if not more, in her neighborhood that have carriage houses that are used for residences. So the thought was just to get her here to have the board legitimize it.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, you could have a seat, thanks. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of the request at 7 Summer Street? I'd like to take a moment, the applicant has given us three letters. I, I think I'll read them into the record real quick. The first one is dated August 9th, it's from Bradley Veer and he lives at two, I'm not sure what his address is, but I'll say, "I understand the subject property owned by Suzanne Travers is required to have a hearing in order to maintain approval for a three family. I am a member manager of the LLC which owns a multifamily property located at 6 Summer Street." That's what I was looking for, directly across from Suzanne's property. I have absolutely no issue with that property continuing as a three family property. The second letter is from Lots Latvis and, let's see, it says, "I am, I have always known this property to be a three family unit and support the use of the property as a three family unit. As you are well aware, three units for this property and many others are not out of character for our neighborhood. The carriage house has been on the property and used as a rental and maintained as such for as long as I can remember." I guess I'm not sure what her address or is, but.
I believe it's Warren Street, but I'm not positive.
Warren Street, we think. The third letter is from Jeffrey Pelletier of 9 Summer Street. He and Emily Ryan, they say that their next-door neighbor Suzanne Travers discussed the public hearing notice for her property. We have lived at 9 Summer Street for four years and from what we have known, the property at 7 has been a three family residence for many years. Multi-unit residences are not out of character for our neighborhood and the carriage house has been on the property and used as a rental and maintained as a rental for many years as well. So we have those three letters in support. Is there anyone with questions, concerns, or opposition to the proposal at 7 Summer Street? I see no hands in the air, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter, Mr. Lionel?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
Short and sweet, Mr. Shaw?
Likewise.
Ms. Boras?
I'm fine with it also.
I'm in support of it also. I think, I'd just like to get on the record that I think the applic, that the property does demonstrate something that requires a variance, the fact that that carriage house has been there for many years. We've seen these before where at times the zoning card doesn't match up for whatever reason. I, and most importantly, I think the testimony from the applicant and the neighbors is very persuasive. I, you know, I went and looked at the property, it looks like it's been there forever and so I have no issue with two principal structures on it. Would somebody like to make a motion? If not, I will. I'll make a motion on behalf of Suzanne Marie Travers. Again, the address is 7 Summer Street and the request is to maintain two principal structures on one lot. I think the board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. And again, those special conditions are that the carriage house has been there as a separate rental for decades and has been used as a three unit for, from decades. I think the board finds that to maintain the two principal structures is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it will not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. To maintain the two principal structures, I think the board finds is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So I make a motion to approve as presented. See a, Mr. Lionel's hand in the air for a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor. That's unanimous. So Ms. Travers, your application is approved. And just as a reminder, there's that 30-day window of appeal beginning tomorrow, so you might want to call Mr. Falk on September 16th and just see if the matter's closed and that there's been no rehearing requests. Any questions? The question Ms. Travers had asked if she needs something in writing and I'll answer that Mr. Falk will be providing you with a letter stating in summary this approval.
And you do have to get a building permit, even though you're not, you may not be building anything, you have, any approval by this board, applicants have to get a building permit within two years. And all, all it's really, all it's really going to be is a, a land use permit that just kind of states that you've gotten approval by this board. If you want, if you want to talk on the phone, we can talk about it offline.
All right, have a good evening and I'll close the public hearing, I'm sorry, public meeting on case number four. So moving right along, I'd like to open the, the public hearing on case number five. The address is 38 and 38A Prescott Street. The request is a variance for minimum land area. 9,540 square feet is existing. 18,668 square feet is required to construct a 16 by 20 addition to the back of an existing two-family building to convert it into a three-family building. Who is here to present this case? Hi sir, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record and if you could walk us through your application.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm speaking on behalf of Naralba Vasquez at 38 Prescott Street.
Great. Could I have your name?
My name is Richard Felix.
Could you spell that for me?
Richard.
I got Richard.
Last name is F.E.L.I.X.
Felix, okay, great. And, and your address?
My address is 37 East Side Lane, Francis Town, New Hampshire.
In the great white north.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a long ways away.
Welcome, could you walk us through your address?
Yep, so we're, we're proposing. Yep, so we're, we're proposing um to put a sixteen-by-twenty addition on the, on a structure that's in the back of the property. Um, the structure will be used for her son and his wife and three kids, which are currently um living in a basement and are limited um to space for the family. Um, so that's basically the reason why she's requesting um to build the, the sixteen-by-twenty structure in the back. Um, the justification for it is that there's a lot of multifamilies on the street. And there's actually a forty-two unit um building, probably a hundred feet from, from where she lives. Um, and there's plenty of driveway space. There's plenty of parking in the back um to accommodate for, for the additional livings, living space. Um, and that's, that's basically what we're requesting at this point.
All right. Thanks for the testimony. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Felix? Mr. Lionell has a question for you.
Yeah. What I, I'm just trying to see how, there's, okay, with this uh, this addition on, there would be, am I reading twenty feet to the rear lot line?
Yes.
Wait a minute, I think that the lots have been combined since-
Yes, both lots are combined.
So it's, it's, it goes like, you might say, all, all the way to the railroad tracks or the slope.
Well, that's what I'm reading here on, on this uh, this map. And it does show the two, two lots. Um, but I'm looking here at the diagram of, oh, maybe, oh, I see what it, that's, that's-
Yeah, the whole, the whole, that whole back lot is, is um empty.
Oh, that's a, that's a setback line. Okay, excuse me, that's not, not a building outline. All right, never mind.
Yeah.
I guess I have a question for you. So, uh, I typically look at each of the, you know, applications we have to see it in person. And so it looks like, you know, there's a front entrance on the street. I think there's like a dog sort of sign right there by that entrance.
Yeah.
The driveway's like on the left side of the house.
That's correct.
And it looks like there's a second unit that's kind of facing the driveway.
Um, there's a door. Um, the, the second unit is actually in the front.
In the front?
Yeah, the door for the second union is, is in the front.
Okay.
There is a couple doors on the side. Um, but that's all for that bottom floor unit.
Okay, so the doors on the side are for the, the first floor unit?
That's correct.
And the door in the front is for the-
It's for the second floor, yeah.
And then this proposed, it looks like there might be another building in the back. Would this addition uh connect those two?
Yes, it will connect. And I, and I do have a paper.
Yeah, if you could, because that was a little confusing for me to
Right, it was.
Understand. And uh, see what we got here. Oh, this is a, oh, there's multiple copies, so I'll pass these on to the other board members and just take a look.
Yeah, so written on there is the existing building and then, you know, what we, what we're proposing to build as an addition.
And then, uh, as, as we look at this, whi- which side is the street on?
Um, so-
Prescott Street.
Towards you.
Towards me?
Yeah, exactly.
So this, uh-
So, so that, that's the driveway-
Here.
That goes there. That's correct.
That's the backyard, back there.
Okay. And then again, this six-
Just to make sure, so you're saying the closest to the street is where it says, uh, room one oh five square feet and it's existing garage area? That's what's towards Prescott, right?
Right, that's close to the-
Yes, the existing area is, is the closest to the uh house.
Where it says addition to be built, that's towards the back.
Towards the back, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I, because I couldn't see your paper as you were pointing to things earlier, so.
Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that's uh clear to me now. Um, the other question I had is, is, is there a, a business there now? Is there a puppy business or something?
No, that, that's relocated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right, I guess that's it for the questions I have. Ms. Boraz or anybody else? Are there questions? Uh, actually, I do have one other. How, how many parking spaces are off-street? I mean, it's a little hard to, to see when, when I just walk by, uh-
As far as on the street?
No, on the, on the-
Or, or in the, or in the driveway?
In the driveway there and a lot.
Um, you could probably fit at least seven, eight cars.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, if there's no other questions, I think uh you could have a seat and we'll see uh what else comes up at here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Felix. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the proposal at thirty-eight Prescott? I see no opposition, so I will close the public uh hearing and open the public meeting. Uh, thoughts on the matter? Anybody want to jump in first?
I'm always doing this. Um, I, I don't really have objections to the proposal. I just noted that the, the lot is awfully narrow um and, and deep. But this addition is being put on the back end of it. So, as long as there is adequate parking, which we have uh statement that there is, um, I, I don't have any objections.
Thank you, Mr. Lionell. Uh, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
All right.
I'm also in favor.
All right. Um, I'd like to say that I, I, I was concerned, you know, about the high overage. Uh, but this uh proposed addition, I, I don't know if you're even going to see it from the street. Uh, I don't hear any objections uh from a butters. I thought maybe folks might think it's a little, little too tight or bringing too much noise. I'm not hearing anything on that matter. Uh, I feel much more uh at ease with this drawing here because it was so soft before. It was like I didn't know, you know, just a stick figure. Uh, those can be problematic. So I'm in, I'm in favor of it uh as well. Would somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Lionell?
Okay. Like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Naralba Valdez-Vasquez. Address thirty-eight and thirty-eight A Prescott Street. Sheet sixty-two, lot thirty-five, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three for minimum land area. Nine thousand five hundred and forty square feet existing. Eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight square feet required to construct a sixteen-foot-by-twenty-foot addition on the back of an existing two-family building to convert it into a three-family building. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special conditions of the property, it's very long and narrow. And the benefit sought cannot be achieved by some other reasonable method other than an area variance. We believe that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Uh, multifamily homes are permitted in this zone. It will not adversely affect the property values of the surrounding parcels. We have no testimony on that. Uh, we don't believe it's contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve this area variance.
Motion on the table to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Um, Ms. Boraz has seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Falk has a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, yes, Mr. Sher. Um, the use of multifamily in the RB zone also requires a conditional use. So they'll have to go to the planning board for a conditional use plan as well. So, after this, they'll have to do that. I think we've discussed it with the applicant.
Okay, they're shaking their heads. That's good. Okay, so they're aware.
So you're done with the zoning board. Now you just have to work with Linda through our staff for the conditional use, which you're aware of. If you have any questions, feel free to give us a call.
Okay.
All right.
So again, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded. Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the approval, so that's unanimous. So, Mr. Felix, congratulations. Uh, if you could kindly, just as a reminder, explain that every decision we make has a thirty-day window of appeal. So you could pull your building, well, you have to go to the planning board. But if you could just explain that, you know, thirty days uh needs to tick by uh before it's, it's fully closed with this board.
But you can still proceed forward with the conditional use plan and everything.
Okay.
So you can keep that process going.
All right, so congratulations. Good luck with your project. Have a good evening. All right. Are we good to keep going? All right, again, I've closed the public meeting on case number five. I'd like to open the public uh hearing on case number six. The address is thirteen, thirteen Raven Street. Uh, the owner is Martha Hobbs. Uh, we have a request for the following variances. To encroach seven feet, six inches into the twenty-foot required front yard setback. And to encroach five feet into the ten-foot required left-side yard setback to construct an attached garage with home addition and second-story rooms above. Uh, who is here to present this case? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address and walk us through your application. Okay, so, uh, if you could, uh, just be in the microphone, because, uh, so the applicant has handed us a picture on his phone of his side yard and there's some stakes in the ground that I'll pass this around. If you could give us your name and address.
I'm David Hobbs. I'm her son. And the first stake that's closest to the house is the point where we run out of driveway and for the variance. That's the position on, on, on this, on the setting on the side. The second stake is at the actual property line along the side of the house, which shows where, and in order to see the, uh, a one-car garage or a two, or what I would have loved originally was a two-car garage. Um, there's no room on the side to do it. Uh, so what I want to do is go over to that side. Go over to that side and, and extend the house in that nine-by-nine area to use it as, basically, um, in that area to the, to the back, there is a mudroom, half-bath, and, and coke closet. Coke closet for that, and then build the second story above that. Um, the front, the front line, we have to come forward on the house. And there's, the street setback for the sidewalk is seven point nine-nine feet. And the house would, and the variance would be the encroaching. So with the seven point nine-nine, we still have um basically about a twenty-two-foot driveway at that point, even though it's fallen within the, uh, fallen within the, uh, the setback for the street for the twenty feet. So we're dealing with twenty-eight feet and I need to, to use the, uh, the additional to get the length of the garage in there to be able to sit a car. And, um, and there'll be a side, a side door to the, um, side door facing front onto the right side of the garage door itself for, for egress and, yeah. And, and, you know, I'm back, back in the sixties when the house, the houses were built in sixty-two by, um, can't think of his name, his last name is Pelletier. Um, way back in, in that, in the sixties, I guess, somewhere along the line, there was a measurement discrepancy. And they actually moved our property line in the mid-sixties. And, you know, things happen. I, I know that. I, I dealt with that myself where something unforeseen happens. And it was a mismeasure somewhere along the line. So the property came from our side between us and seventeen. And they moved the property line over, which is what killed the, uh, the single-car garage on there. Because it, it, you can see from the, that first stake closest, the house should have shifted five feet to the right or towards, uh, towards the other direction for it, for the driveway to fit within the original uh ten-foot setbacks that I guess you would, we would have needed uh from the side yard, so. And the best way of both worlds is just to pull it forward and put the single car there and then shift it five feet in the front. If you've got a picture of, of the exterior of the house, uh, there's about a five-foot section and then there's the, the window for the dining area and the kitchen. And that's, that five-foot non-winced area is what will be the front wall of the, front wall of the garage. Or, actually, I should say back wall of the garage.
Okay.
So, to leave it so it all looks consistent. Um, I will tell, the siding will be consistent. Uh, if you've got a picture of the outside of the house up there, the, uh, the James Hardy siding that's on the front picture, uh, which is the living room side, that will be carried all the way through the house. And we'll be using uh the James Hardy um, uh cedar plank look uh with extra insul- which is, everything's being re-insulated as, as I'm redoing this. So we'll go, the original house was built, it's got R nine in the walls. When I'm, when I'm done, we'll have R thirteen in the walls plus the three-point-six from the half-inch foam. Plus, I think it's two-point-eight on the James Hardy additional of that concrete siding. So it brings the, the, and it modifies or, or modernizes the house and brings it up into, within the specs of a brand-new construction. I'm trying to make it as efficient and, and uh, as efficient as possible and, and energy-efficient along with it. And, and of course, my mother's getting elderly, so the slightly shorter driveway helps in the wintertime for her.
All right. Um, are you all set? I think-
Yeah, I think, I'm, I think I'm all set.
Let's see if there's any questions. Uh, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? I guess I have a couple of questions. I'll just jump in there if you don't mind and-
Go for it.
Um, you know, one of the uh elements we look for is the consideration of, you know, is there a consideration of minimizing any setback requests? And when I look at the plan, uh, if you could help me understand, couldn't, couldn't the garage be built a little further back?
It, it would have to go into the backyard at that point. There's not enough, i- if we were taking from the side set, we could push the garage towards the backyard. But then we're, what would happen is to have a, basically a twelve-foot wide garage, I'd have about two feet between there and our actual property line. We've only got sixteen feet. It's on, on, from the side of the house to the property line is sixteen feet. And if you put a twelve-foot garage in there and without the, without the door in there, I, I would have from there to the property line, four feet. And then if later on, somebody was to put a fence up in there, the, the aggressor to the backyard from there would be so small, you couldn't put a normal gated, a gate-in on a side, side lawn on it. That's what, it just gets really tight.
Okay, um, I actually have a question for Mr. Falk. And uh, uh, what is the distance from the left side of the house to the side property line?
I believe it's sixteen feet is-
Exactly sixteen feet.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I guess-
Setback is ten.
Setback is ten. Uh, because another thought I had on your application is when there's encroachment, say, in the side and the front, in the terms of minimizing it, like, one thought that comes to my mind is, is a single-story versus, you know, a, a two-story. When I, you know, drive up and down Raven Street, which I did a couple of times, to me, you know, the, the fronts of the houses are all kind of uniform. And with this proposal in my mind, it would look to me like two stories sticking out front, like, like really out of character with the neighborhood is my thought. But I just wonder if you could speak to that.
Yeah. There, yeah, there's been a lot, everything, both Raven and Door and Archery and Arrow, which are the other two across the, across Lund Road, were all built at the same time. And they're all consistent. About fifty to sixty percent, I would guess, have had major modifications done to them. Second stories added, garages added to them. Um, I think it's twenty, probably about twenty-seven Raven. That, that house, it started as a little cape and it is absolutely huge now. And then the one across the street, it was the same thing. They doubled the size of the house. They had a lo-, a, a- They had a lo- a long lot and they actually put a house next to it with a two-car garage above it. And they're all attached in one piece, so there's been a lot. For, for starter neighborhood back in the early sixties, for starter homes, most of the houses in, in, in Raven have, and Dora have had immensely beautiful work done on them to, to upgrade them over the years. It's, there's, and there's a couple of examples. The corner of Christopher, where they added a garage, which is kind of linear to what we did, what I'm proposing to do. It's four-door, I think it is, did almost, is almost identical to probably how I want to sit everything, except the, the difference is the aggress into the dri- into the garage from the driveway is you turn ninety degrees as you're pulling in the driveway. And, and which is the opposite street over, or the next street over.
Okay. So, okay, you're, you're saying, in summary, there's been a lot of, you're saying there's other houses in the area have been enlarged.
Yeah.
The other question I have is, I look at this drawing here and I see the existing house. And so this is the garage you're proposing.
Yeah.
And then there's a little room here on the back.
Right.
Which you talked about, and then.
And that's what would become, and, and bumping out the front by seven feet. And what I'm going to do is expand the kitchen and the dining area into it.
So that's seven feet.
Yeah.
That you're proposing to bump out the front, does that get into the front yard setback?
No, not at all.
Okay. Then on the next page, there's this picture. And I'm not sure what this is. Is this the second story? Because this just is confusing to me. Because the, the outline of this picture doesn't match the outline of this picture, I think.
That's, that's the second story, yeah. The sitting on the front of the, the sitting on the front of the house to, the gar- the garage is the left side of it going with the nine-foot.
Is this the garage?
That's the, right, that's the second floor above the garage. Okay, with the, and then to the right of it is in the front of, where it breaks out to the right is the front of the house going to the center line of the front of the house.
So that bump out in the front that you're going to combine with the done, is it?
Is sitting right on top of that, yeah. That's, that's, that's above the bump out. That's the bump out plus the additional center line of the house.
Okay. And, but is there not something back here?
I, I, I want to take the, that room on that side right to the center line of the house, so the back part of the house would, it would stay single floor there.
Okay.
And then to the right of, right of it, the right side of that, about, almost twenty feet of it would be same thing, single floor. So it kind of looks, kind of looks, kind of like a split. So you're going to end up with a house with a single level and a double level attached to it with the garage underneath.
Okay, thank you. And my, it looks to me like this second story goes all the way to the back though in this picture. But I thought what you were saying is it goes partway back and stops.
It, it only, it goes to the center line of the house is what I was using. I was going to use the, the center line and the, the center line wall that separates the front from the back half of the house and act as it is, as its support.
All right, I, I got that, thank you. I think I, questions have been answered, so I will look to the other board members and see if they have any questions. Mr. Shaw?
I, actually, I wanted to clarify something because I, you do have, you are asking for a need, some relief for the front, front yard setback. Seven feet, six inches into the front yard setback.
Yes.
But I thought, Mr. Curry, you were asking on the garage structure if that was requiring front yard.
No, I was talking about the new kitchen area.
Thank you.
Yeah. So that new, the proposed new kitchen area is within, is not within the front yard setback.
Thank you, I, I missed that part of it.
Okay. Any other questions? I think we're all set with questions, so thank you for your testimony, Mr. Hobbs, you can have a seat.
Thanks, thanks.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposal at thirteen Raven Street? Is there anybody with questions or concerns or opposition to thirteen Raven Street? Going once, going twice? None, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody would like to lead off? Maybe I'll lead off. I guess, I, I understand, I guess I had concerns with this from the sidewalk and the application. I, I understand, I also didn't understand clearly what was being proposed, but, but now I do. I, I guess, this is just, just my thought is, I'm, you know, I'm feeling that the two-story front encroachment will, will look out of character. But that's just me. I'm struggling with that, but I'm open, you know, looking forward to three other opinions on the matter. I admire the applicant's, you know, willingness to expand the property as, as he's looking to do. I just think finding some heartburn with that front portion sticking out. Two stories, but that's just me and I'm looking to hear what anybody else might have to say. Mr. Lionell?
I share your concern with the front part sticking out. I think it's going to look out of character for the immediate neighborhood of the house. We, in the past, have been much more sanguine about granting side yard setbacks for garages that were built right, right up to the property line. And I'd be, I, I agree that a, a two-story addition that's juts out the way this does and looking at the roofline, it's going to look strange. I'm having difficulty with this.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I have the same concern, just that because that, I think you, you know, the two-story full facade and which really ends up being because of the proposed roofline, it's like that two-and-a-half-story kind of effect. And I, I guess I am concerned that even with all the other kind of expansions and additions and things going on in the neighborhood, it still seems that this could be very imposing, at least in the very immediate surrounding homes. So I think, I think what you were getting at, and I think, I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if the, if that, especially front encroachment was only a single story. Now, I don't know, like, trying to envision how to work that in with the rest of the proposal is hard for me to, to see how that is. This almost in a way to me quickly leads to the question of, do we inquire the applicant, you know, if there's a, I guess, I'd almost like to see if there's a way this could be proposed that doesn't have that part of the incursion and maybe get, you know, give the applicant another chance to kind of come back with something. Because my concern is we could say, you know, they might approve it with only a single-story front, front yard setback incursion, but I'm not sure we really know how that's going to look because this plan would have to be altered in some fashion, so. I know Ms. Boras hasn't had a chance to comment, but I think we're already kind of going towards a certain direction here, it seems.
All eyes on Ms. Boras now.
I have the same struggles, all of the same issues that my colleagues have brought up. I just believe the way it's proposed, it's going to be out of character as well, like, based on this current proposal.
All right, well, let's.
I would suggest that the board just vote and deliberate on what's submitted. Because you never know what it's going to look like or what other variances would be needed or how it's going to work out if it's just a single story. You know, and incursions to the front and side. So I, I would suggest just voting on, on the case as is. If it's not supported, he can always ask for a rehearing and show a one-story addition instead. That's an option here for the applicant.
Yeah, a couple of thoughts on Mr. Falk's statement is, I, you know, I, I think the, the city planning staff is, you know, sometimes when we say scale something back, like, that's kind of straightforward. Other times it can be a little murky, you know, because the calculations aren't there. And, and I think that that's where that's, that's coming from. I mean, just some thoughts on the matter. I guess, prior to Mr. Falk speaking, I, I think I was thinking just like you, it's like, ooh, I'm not seeing three other affirmative votes here to just move this along and what would have, or what was coming to my mind, I think what might even come into your mind was, was maybe a discussion with the applicant, you know, it's not looking favorable, but a table and maybe a scaled-back project, which is something we've done. I, I think what Mr. Falk is asking or suggesting that, that we don't do that and just take it as is.
As is.
And if the applicant wants to come back with, say for example, something else, just to, to throw it out in the Fisher v Dover test, I'm just going to say, say if it was a single story, you know, or, you know, I mean, the board could, you say that, it's a significantly different application.
Yeah, that would, that would not be rehearing request, that would be a new application.
Yeah, I think that would be a new application.
Yeah, because I, I think it, it would be inappropriate for us to try to design this addition here and, and that Mr. Hobbs can, can work with his, his contractors, architects, whatever, and, and try to come up with a, a design that, that we're, we'd be happier with.
Or would meet the criteria for an area variance.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's clear that he's going to need some sort of area variance, almost no matter what he does. But we've, as, as I commented earlier, we've granted variances for side yard setbacks for garages, even, you know, going really right up to the, right up to the property line. And I, you know, that would be something that I would view a little bit more favorably than, than this proposal.
Mr. Falk?
Also, I know the, the term out of character was being turned around a little bit. Maybe not within the spirit and intent of the zoning district might be a more applicable term because that's really not one of the cri- that's not really one of the points of law for a variance. It would be for a special exception.
Right.
This is true.
My bad.
And that kind of goes hand in hand with the spirit and intent anyway. To make sure the applicant hears the right points of law for what he's asking for.
It's the front, the front setback that's bothering most of us, yes.
Any other discussion on the matter? If not, you know, given the discussion, I guess maybe I'm, I'm inclined to make a motion here. Let me see where it goes. So I'm going to make a motion on behalf of Martha Hobbs to deny the request for encroachment of seven feet, six inches into the twenty-foot required front yard setback and to encroach five feet into the ten-foot required left side yard setback to construct an attached garage and home addition with second story above. I think the board is finding, believes that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. I think the board, given the special conditions of the property, I think the board is well aware that the property line was, was moved after, you know, the property, the house was built. But I think the board finds that the applicant can enjoy benefits of expanding on that side of the house without the second-story encroachment, particularly in the front yard setback. I think the board finds that the, the second-story encroachment, seven feet, six inches into the twenty-foot front yard setback is, is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board is concerned it'll adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. I think we find it's, it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is, is, is not served by granting a variance, but in, in fact, by denying it. So I guess I make a motion here to deny the area variances. Mr. Lionell has seconded the motion.
A question for you. I'm not sure if you misspoke, but I thought you said it's not contrary to public interest and I didn't think that's what you meant.
Yes, I, what I meant to say was that the board finds that the second story in the front yard setback is contrary to public interest. If I said not contrary, I, I misspoke on that. Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion on the motion? A show of hands in favor of the motion of denial. So that's four, nothing. So Mr. Hobbs, you've heard the discussion here. I, I guess, I'm sorry we weren't able to approve it. If you have any questions, you could talk to Mr. Falk. And with that, I will close the public meeting on case number six. Are we good to keep going? Well, I think just to, to read into the applicant, if there was a question by the applicant, would it make a difference if the garage was to a second story? I don't know if it's, we, we really shouldn't be discussing the case out of the court, but you've heard our discussion tonight about the denial and, you know, I think for some of us it would be, I'd say that in summary because that's what we've been discussing. But not necessarily any sort of guarantee. And with that, I'd like to move on to the next matter. We're good to keep going, yes? Okay, we have a rehearing request. We actually have two. And I, so the matter is three seventy-one Main Street. We actually have two rehearing requests. We, we have one from Mr. Mello and Anudo, which is before us in writing tonight. We received an email on that a while ago. And we also have one by Mr. Maynard, both for three seventy-one Main Street. I thought we would do the one that chronologically came in first, which is the one from the Raymond Mello and Joseph Anudo because that arrived to us first. Are we good with?
Did it really?
Yeah.
Yeah, be careful, this one didn't get received till August seventh.
Yeah.
It's just they, they referenced the, they were talking about June fourth, the original date, but the, the one that came in from Mr. Maynard came in on July twenty-seventh.
Oh, actually, so I, I, I guess I had received the one from Mello in an email and this one was.
Before you actually physically received the packet.
Packet, so, but I guess by, going by the receive date, then Maynard.
That's, that was what I thought you meant, actually, because I was, yeah.
So I had received it in a first order, but I, I think we should do it chronologically.
I think, yeah, I think that's probably how most of us receive them because of mail versus email in this case. Because it looked like that second one just got received probably right after our packets got mailed out, so.
So I, I think we'll do the, the Maynard and Paquette first because that was received by City Hall first.
Yeah. Seems appropriate to me.
That's fine, that's fair.
Okay. So have, we all had a chance to read through that? Why don't we go through the four questions first and, and see where we're at? Question number one, was there any procedural error, this includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera? Mr. Lionell?
No.
All right.
Nope.
Mr. Shaw, no? Ms. Boraz? And I, in summary, say no. I think there's a claim to that in the request, because there were three people sitting, but that is not a procedural error by our bylaws. Although I think the writer was claiming that, but it is, I disagree. I don't think there was any procedural error, so...
You're talking about the fact, the question about proceeding with less than a five members on the board.
Correct, yeah. I would also like to note that I wasn't here on that meeting, but I read through the minutes. And I don't think there was a procedural error. In fact, I think that the applicant was... The board discussed with the applicant about not going forward, and the applicant wanted action immediately, is the way I read the minutes.
The applicant really didn't have a choice, because we had a quorum, and the city ordinances require us to move forward if there is a quorum.
Yeah, I think he noted his objection, if I recall correctly. But we also noted that we, like Mr. Lionell said, we don't have a choice about that, and the applicant didn't have a choice about that.
Yeah, so the objection has no effect.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, question number two. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Mind if I keep going clockwise? Mr. Lionell?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Boraz?
No.
And my answer to that is no. Number three, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Lionell?
In my opinion, this particular rehearing request does not contain any relevant new information.
All right, Mr. Shaw?
I agree, I felt like it was just a re-summarization of the original application.
All right, Ms. Boraz?
And I agree with my colleagues.
And my opinion on the matter is I agree also that it does not contain any new information. I would like to point out that the information, like the article in Telegraph, about the lack of space, I don't think... I'm confident that that is not a situation that this board should be making different decisions of zoning criteria because of that situation or that article. You know, for example, assuming, you know, if the article was accurate, you know, Tim Cummings or anyone could petition an alderman to increase density in whatever orderly fashion they see fit. But I don't think it's a call for this board to relax the variance or special exception criteria. So my short answer is no. Did you want to jump in?
I just would like to even maybe strongly echo that, in that, yeah, I agree that it's... That's very much a land use code kind of codification that should happen. And, you know, it's up to the Board of Aldermen to pursue that, but certainly not our board. I mean, we certainly can, we're here to interpret, but for us to somehow say, just because there's an identified housing shortage, you know, issue and need, we might all be very empathetic towards that and very concerned about it, but it's not incumbent upon us to try to solve that through our actions. We're just supposed to interpret that land use. So, yeah, I completely agree. It's, you know, it's news, it's of a concern, you know, I think, for the city and all, but it's not our board's purview, so...
All right. Moving on to question number four. Is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lionell?
Not in this request.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Boraz?
No.
And my opinion is no as well. So based on that, the requister of the rehearing, Richard Maynard, and Maynard and Paquette Engineering Associates, I'm making a motion to deny the rehearing request, given our testimony, and that the rehearing request criteria is not met. Is there a second? Ms. Boraz had seconded the motion to deny that rehearing request. Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion to deny it is unanimous. And so we shall move on to the next rehearing request, which is by Raymond Mello and Joseph Anudo, who are butters. And I guess I'll tick through the first question. Was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. Mr. Lionell?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No, but I think, I'd like to note that there was the information that pointed out our actions regarding the... Sorry, I need to find the... That we, that there was a thing about the, you know, we reopened the meeting, and there was this discussion about that we had, you know, there had been, quote, "two questions", and that we exceeded that. And I guess my point to that is, I think we were... That was not meant to be precise in the sense of we could only ask two questions as the topics that we were trying to focus on, so... So there was that part of things, and then there had been some basic shouts from the audience to be heard in that matter. And I think I was actually fairly vociferous in my point that it was inappropriate for us to do that based on our rules. So, in my mind, I believe we acted very much according to our bylaws, followed our procedures, and so I think there was some unfortunate timing for those that showed up, but that was well beyond after we had, you know, already been hearing the case and had essentially all but finished. So I guess I just wanted to be clear on that, because the question by itself is fairly, you know, generic, but I think that that had been raised and was expressed as a concern, and I don't believe that we... I believe we still followed our procedures, so...
Okay, thank you. Ms. Boraz?
No.
Okay. I wanted to, first, Mr. Shaw, thank you for that clarification, because I might be repeating what you said, but I wasn't here, but I read the minutes. But in short, it looks like the public hearing had clearly been closed for some length of time before some folks came in, quite frankly, late. And if that was the case, then that window of opportunity had closed, and it would be improper to reopen the public hearing for that. And is that the way that played out?
Yes.
Okay. And then I just wanted to say that on the opening of the public hearing to discuss some questions with Mr. Maynard, I mean, I hear what you say. You might say, well, we have two questions, you know, you asked two questions, but then, you know, it's, they're not quite answered, so that you ask a third question, maybe, to clarify that. And I think what you're saying is, there was some discussion back and forth, but it was not outside the window of what was being, the public hearing was reopened for.
Right, the purpose and reason that we reopened was to have that, those questions, or that dialogue with Mr. Maynard, because of the nature of talking about the number of units in that part of things, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. My answer is no on number two as well. Number three, does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Lionell?
I believe it does. Contain a great deal of additional information that we did not have at the time.
Okay, so could you step through maybe a couple of those, just...
Well, the comments about, well... About what, which, you know, what was the neighborhood? Was it Main Street or Fowl Avenue? About the state of the existing building. Some of this is sort of personal opinion. But it's, it was clear that there was a lot of information we didn't get to hear at that meeting, because the people made a mistake and arrived late. And if we had heard that, I suspect, going on to question four, we might have made a different decision.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I guess I don't feel quite as strongly as Mr. Lionell does. I mean, although, I guess I'm open to considering the fact that there is some... I guess I can say, yes, there is some additional information there. Whether, I think that ultimately leads to whether we should hear the case of a different question. So I guess I'm okay with acknowledging that there is some additional information.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Boraz?
I concur with Mr. Shaw.
My thought on number three is, well, strictly, yes, there's new information, like the house had a fire, you know, that's undeniable that that was not heard, but is here. So that's new information. Then there's a language of "not presented or available to the board". I guess I interpret that as being... It was available. It had happened, you know, there was a fire, for example, and it was not presented to the board. But the spirit and intent of that language is, say if, for example, someone came late or just didn't show up, said, "I don't like that decision, so I'm putting out a rehearing request, and I'm going to throw something new out that I didn't, because maybe I wasn't here or I came late", I feel that that falls under, it was available to the board that night, but it wasn't presented because they were late. So I guess I answer that question, no, but that's just me, the way I interpret that. I don't want to have a strong arm. I say we move on to question number four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Did I miss it, or did...
We skipped question two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, I was like, looking at my notes, and I'm realizing this doesn't match up to question two, so, yeah.
My bad.
Yeah, thank you.
So we just talked about question three. Let's go in reverse and go to question number two, sorry about that. Was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception or variance?
No.
A no from Mr. Lionell. A no from Mr. Shaw.
No.
A no, and a fourth no from me. Now on to question number four. Is there anything which would, could, cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Lionell? If you want to go last, because you're struggling with it, that's fine, too.
Yes, I wanted to go last.
Perfectly fine. Maybe we'll go, you want to go? We'll go the opposite way. My opinion is no. And I say that because, so we have new information here that was not presented at the board. And I look at the decision that was rendered, and I say, is there anything that would, could, cause the board to make a different decision? Well, not for me. I feel that the decision that was, you know, the discussion, and I'll summarize it, that the board was okay with granting the front house, if we want to call it that, but scaling back, if we want to say, the existing structure from five to three, instead of five to four, because of the overage of the lot. And if, when I overlay this information in the Mello and the Anudo request, it wouldn't affect my decision on that, but that's just me. That's where I'm at. Since we're going counterclockwise, you're up next.
My response is no, based on what was presented at that time.
All right, Mr. Shaw?
I'm also no, and I think I pretty much concur with the way you went through it, that there isn't, that, again, I'll acknowledge that there was some additional information, but I don't believe it's of significance that would have changed the board's actions or decisions.
Mr. Lionell?
I'm going to say no.
All right. So I think we have all no's on one, two, and four, and we have one yes on number three. I think what I might do is make a motion to deny this request based on what we have here, and see where that goes. So I'm going to make a motion on the matter of the rehearing request at 371 Main Street to deny the rehearing request. Per our discussion, there was a uniform consent that there was no procedural error, not an illegal decision, and there's nothing that would, could, cause the board to make a different decision. In terms of criteria number three, there's not universal belief that there's new information presented or available at the board. There's mixed reviews on that among this board. But in summary, I make a motion to deny the rehearing request. And I'll leave it at that. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion on that motion to deny? Seeing no discussion, a show of hands in favor of the denial. So that's four to one, so that rehearing request. I'm sorry, four to zero. What am I saying, four to one? Looking at Mr. Falk out of the corner of my eye, and somehow thought he was...
He didn't get the vote.
Are we good to keep going? We do have another rehearing request, actually.
If you want to call it that.
I think we should treat it as correspondence, accept it as correspondence to the board. That was my thought about it.
Okay.
And I'm fine even just briefly discussing it and why. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, I think on, I saw, say, on July 27th, 2018, City Hall received a request by Mr. David Pierce, and that was in the matter of a decision by this board on July 28th, 2015. And I'll just lead off by saying this is well outside of the 30-day window of appeal, and therefore, the board will not take the matter up. Mr. Lionell, are you good with that?
Yep.
Mr. Shaw?
Yep.
Ms. Boraz?
Yes.
All right, well, we discussed that correspondence.
Yeah, I mean, I would just like to note, it's kind of a little bit of the educational aspect of our board for the public, in that, and I think Mr. Pierce is already in parallel doing the appropriate thing. He's working with code enforcement of his concern. And that's what code enforcement is for, and that's what code enforcement does. And this board does not enforce. We simply render the decisions based on our interpretation. So I think he, you know, he even recognized he was trying to do something in parallel, but the reality is, he's going down the one path that he should, and this board is, there's no action to be taken, so...
All right. Moving on, we have two sets of minutes before us. We have the July 10th minutes. Mr. Shaw, Lionell, and Boucher were here. I've read through the minutes. I will start off by saying, do you have any amendments to the minutes, Mr. Lionell?
No, I looked through them both, I didn't see any issues.
No.
I didn't know if you had a chance to read through those. So I'm just going to make a motion to accept the minutes of July 12th, 2018, as presented.
July 10th?
July 10th. Wow, I need my reading glasses, sorry about that. July 10th, 2018, as presented, and make a motion to approve. Is there a second to that, Mr. Lionell? A show of hands in favor, that's unanimous. We have a set of minutes from July 24th. Had a full board that night and a few extras. I see no amendments to the meeting. I'm looking around, does anyone have any amendments to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the July 24th, 2018 minutes as presented. Seconded by Mr. Shaw. A show of hands in favor of that is unanimous. We have an agenda for the next meeting, July 28th. We'll take a quick look at that.
There is one typo in there, did you see it? You have July, August, for the published date, I think. The very first sentence.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll fix that.
Yeah.
So, uh, just a note on the first sentence, uh, scratch July and it'll be August 18th. So we have East Pearl Street, Park Avenue, Lock Street, Blackstone Drive. I just have a question. Where is Park Avenue? I'm sorry, Park Avenue?
Park Avenue, um, uh, in the middle of the city. It's not near any city boundaries. I don't remember. It's somewhere central city. I don't remember the exact major street it was near.
So.
Solid, single-family neighborhood, but.
Okay. So, uh, in terms of any regional impact, uh, Mr. Lionell is shaking his head no. Mr. Shaw?
No.
Is it no? Ms. Boraz?
No.
No, and I'm a no. So, uh, the board finds there's no regional impact on the, uh, agenda for August 28th. Uh, is there any other business for, for the board tonight? If not, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
Mr. Lionell was quick at that. I second that motion. All in favor?
Eight twenty-one.
Eight twenty-one. We got through it quicker than I thought it would be.